I gotta tell you, my son skateboards at that park. Almost every day he has a chance.
That's awesome.
I think he loves that park.
Every day you let him, huh?
I know there's not as many people with dogs there, but there's always one or two.
Yeah.
Well, it's an hit Facebook about because they set the water off. People was complaining. Well, it's that time of year.
Yeah.
You don't want the sprinklers to freeze.
Basically after them. That time of year, they just turn it off.
Free your own water.
Well, it's supposed to be freeze Friday night.
Yeah, and I got a motorhome that isn't ready.
I don't know if it freezes. I don't know if I can.
Probably not, if I have my heat on.
Got heater on, it shouldn't be no problem.
Okay. Chris is the same way.
Chris not moving?
I don't think we should. And watch the boxes. And Vinita, you got my message, right? For making about the first part of this work session?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Updating my system. Oh, that's always a good time.
At least it's during workshop.
Huh?
At least it's during workshop.
Mine is not syncing either.
They're working too good, so they have to redo something.
Slime, slime what?
Slide your head down.
Yeah, everything is working, so we've got nothing to do with these people.
Yeah.
And they have to all bounce through. They're trying to update us like, who'd you update this for?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm sure what it's doing. So it's going through the whole thing. Okay. See if it does it again. Maybe I didn't. Maybe I didn't shut down correctly last time.
This one doesn't. This one is.
Yeah.
You're good?
Yeah, so I think what it was is that I hit to shut down and then I closed the lid and it hadn't finished shutting down.
Okay, so.
We should be fine.
You're good?
Yeah.
Both in screen thing on. Okay.
What do you have for, you have an?
I have all kinds of weird stuff that pops up.
You're good? You're all good?
What?
She's Tanya's best friend. Tanya's just running away.
Yeah, I thought she said that too. Thank you, ma'am.
So you're good to go?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and get your trash things on.
What are you trying to say?
Beautiful casper.
Oh, it's a great day here, too.
Wasn't even really. Seems like we're talking more than this, wouldn't it?
I'm going to throw this computer out the window.
Which window? Is there room for two?
Yeah, exactly.
Tommy?
Stand by, stand by, must tap you. In the board of adjustments.
To do what?
Go on the board of adjustments.
Oh.
That's who we're appointing tonight on the board of adjustments.
Oh, hi. Yeah, yeah, I thought you said somebody else, I was like. All right, is everybody ready? All right. All this work session to order, and there's one thing on the agenda tonight, and that's discussing the options for the BLM parcel. Located on the south side of town, and I will turn the floor over to the city attorney and public works director Cody Dill. So whoever wants to go first.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council. For tonight's workshop, Cody Dill and I will be presenting. And we will be discussing the BLM parcel. This is, it's displayed here on your screen. And it is actually what is the background of this image. So by way of background, this, the parcel is located on the south side of town. It is located just north of I-80, and so it's actually sense between Donnell and I-71, and roughly between Bennett and Jackson Street. Compromises about 20 acres. And I discussed, I gave council an update about the patent from 1967. I've also provided another copy of the entire patent document, management and use plans that are in the board documents. And so the parcel, the way it was planned to be developed was to essentially fence off the entire, just about the entire 20 acre parcel, and use it as a streets department shop and storage area for streets materials. So there are several uses of, we, so our presentation tonight revolves around the ways that city can, or that the city can use this parcel, and there are four options. And if we proceed with the proposed use and plan, or if we proceed with the original plan, we, you know, it still requires some updates and modifications, and so I'm going to turn the mic over to Cody to discuss where some of the history and, or the current setup of the streets department and the proposed plan use for the parcel, and then I will present some additional options.
So, honorable mayor and council, so currently our street department is located on Third Street. We share the shop with our utilities department for the equipment. And then we have certain storage areas throughout town. Such as that our daily street lots where we keep most of our gravel materials. And what we'd like to do with that, with this parcel is kind of utilize it for what it was for and start taking our two lots that we have here for storage and combining them into one and utilizing that BLM lot. There's a section, about a four acre section on the side right here, that we'd like to start utilizing for just development in the future for material storage and possible snow storage. We have to go to the BLM and make some modifications to the original patent for snow storage. But as of right now, we'd like to start developing this lot and fencing off approximately the 4.2 acres right there, and starting to utilize it with materials. So we have a more central location for all of our, our salt sands, asphalt mills, rock, road base, some of the bigger, larger stuff that we have spread out through town. Future, we would love to have a shop here and start storing all of our equipment in one shop for our streets department. Because we are kind of spread out between asphalt plant on Daily Street and our Third Street Public Works shop. So having a central location and, and just being able to update and have a new usable shop would be fantastic for our streets department. And so we would just like to look at moving forward with the original patent and starting to develop this section. So, starting this year, we, we have started to just kind of clear off the sagebrushes a little bit. But we would be looking at capital budget for fencing off and barricading next year and utilizing it for winter storage. And moving some, like I said, some of the street materials over there, probably. Hopefully, we can start utilizing the snow storage lot this winter. We'll have to discuss that with the BLM. But if not, early spring, we'd like to start moving materials over there and fencing off this four acre lot. Like I said, spring, like the budget, we'd be doing a six foot chain link fence around it. We'll have to look at the cost, cost would be determined. And let's see. Like I said, the materials that we want to start storing there for the early development would be like the rock, sand, asphalt, millings, and road base. A lot of this stuff, as far as the fencing, we'll have to start looking into, if we're going to potentially start looking at a shop or a building, we'd look into costs for water, sewer, storm, electrical and gas, and start looking at putting a project together to build a new shop, but that would be in the future. We bring cost estimates for that shop probably in '26, if we still would like to move forward with this project. But initially, we would just like to start to develop and use the patent for at least material storage and putting a fence around the four, approximately four point acre, 4.2 acres.
So to follow up on, on, on some of this, I have been in communication with the BLM and the representative that is in charge of all of these, updating the city's use on this. So although the city has the patent, because this modifies the use, and by modifying, they, what they want are like exact plans. It's like, how many lines are you going to have on a page? How many things are you going to use? And so they want a more detailed plan of how we would use this. And we do have a tentative meeting set up in the next couple of weeks with the BLM to go over some of these details and to really understand what do they need from us right now? What can we kind of have as a development plan? Because as Cody described, initially, the city is looking to use only a portion of the parcel. And the, to, it's really this part where it is, you can see where it is actually a little bit graded here. And that corresponds to that about 4.2 acres to have it fenced. And it would already, this was actually in the original plans, the original gates. They just want a little more specificity. How is it going to be used? What's the timeline? What's the projected cost? How long before you bring other buildings in? Is it going to be placed the same as before? What kinds of modifications? They just really want that type of oversight and control. So the other options.
Jackie, I have a question.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
My concern with this is that side of town has always gotten a lot of flack for the corrals anyway. And that's like our, our view when you're coming into town. How are we going to make this, if we go through this Plan One, not look like another dump site?
Well, we'd definitely be having the lot prepared and maintained very nicely and have the material piles separated in very, in an orderly fashion. It would definitely be a storage yard. It would, you'd have rock piles of asphalt, milk, rock, road base, et cetera. But we would definitely be keeping this lot maintained in an orderly look. So it wouldn't look too bad from the highway.
This is like one of our first views of the town coming in. You know what I mean? That's my concern.
Well, if the lot is weed free, the fence is straight, the piles are, you know, it's like junk car. When you go to a junk car and the cars are everywhere versus a car lot. That's, that would be the difference to me.
You know, and, and I believe these were some of the concerns that were originally addressed back in the 1960s. Because there were concerns about, you know, what's this, is it going to be managed in an orderly and maintained? And that's one of the requirements is a management plan is how are you going to keep it from getting ugly and making sure that it is, you know, it doesn't detract from what it really is.
Yeah, and then I'd worry about it, too, the snow piling up in areas where it would cause issues. I'm not saying it's a definite no, but.
It'll help with snow because that's where we pile the snow, so it's got a pile of snow there.
And Donnell Street, that is one of the, our hardest streets to keep clear when we have snowstorms because it blows in from the south and that will drift in, in a matter of hours. And so we spent, our crew's spending a lot of time clearing that out. So certain sections of it just might act as a snow block, basically.
And there's some, you know, some other legitimate concerns, and I agree with Jackie, these, you know, these are certainly points to ponder. The other, some of the other concerns in regard to when we were looking at, well, what are some of the, for immediate use would be, you know, beginning to develop it for extended use. And it would be, okay, Cody's getting in some materials from YDOT. And then there's the winter snow storage that has occurred. And then there's also the safety considerations. Well, there's these mounds of dirt. They can be jumping mounds, right, to enthusiasts with, you know, four, four wheelers and things like that. And that is where the, the barriers and how to mitigate some of those attractive nuisance risks. And also where the fencing, the six foot fencing comes into the discussion. And if, you know, for future development, and I will defer to Cody, is to ultimately utilize the entire parcel as originally intended for the streets department. And it would be able to consolidate all of those activities into one spot.
How many vehicles does the street department have?
Roughly, I, four, four pickups, three snowplows, two sweepers, a grader, two loaders, and about three or four trailers, a roller, paint machines, lay down machines, two lay down machines, and traffic control materials, roughly off the top of my head.
So like 19, 20 rolling stock and then?
Yeah.
The signs?
Yep. It, our utility shop at Public Works is full between all of our equipment from utilities and streets department packed into the one shop. We're losing space.
It's hard to work on them in there, I know.
Yeah.
So this is one of the, the proposed options. So then the, and so let me actually go back to the original plan. It discusses, I don't have it on the screen. But it is in your packet, and it does have a timeline. It was a four-year phased. And I'll, we'll expand this out here.
Yeah. It's under number three.
And so even back then, at 115,000, you know, adjusted for current costs, it's, it is a pricey endeavor. And so that is why it had been phased out. I mean phased over time.
What year was this again?
1966.
That was the cost in 1966?
The fence, it was $9,000. That would do one side.
Yeah.
Short side.
Build the suffering.
Yeah, $80,000 small shop.
That's what concrete now.
Yeah.
And this, you know, notably, this does not have, does not include the infrastructure, water, sewer, storm.
Well, it does. It's up above. I didn't say storm, but it's, the fence was 9,000.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
110 feet of water service line to building, 120 sewer. Level and grade part of the yard. Level and grade remainder of the yard, pour concrete foundation flooring for building.
And it does not include electricity and gas.
Right. But the first year, it looks like water, sewer, level it and fence. But if we're not going to build the building the first year, if we can get that changed, that will drop off some of it.
Well, and that's also part of the, the question as well is the city doesn't necessarily have to use it as originally planned and place all the shop. It could do, you know, a portion of it, and that's where storage materials are, but I mean, I, I, again, Cody would be the one to best speak to. If they were at different locations, you kind of still encounter some of the same issues of logistics. But you do have more space to work.
And the plans could currently change through the years. The city might want to do something else with it. But having a lot, I think that's set up for this, and we could utilize it, I think, would be good for our streets department right now by consolidating some of our stuff.
Yeah, it's kind of here and there and everywhere.
So there are, as discussed, there's some other options. And the first would be the modification of use. This was a, this has been explored before by the city in, in different ways. There were concepts for parks, for soccer fields. The concept that included parks, child development, a community center. So there's been some, some ideas along the way. Nothing has ever been gone through the entire modification process. So that is one of the, the things it has, that's why this current patent is still in play. If it was modified, it would be for something other than the streets department. Again, a park, something else. The city would maintain some control, but the patent restrictions would still apply. And because times have changed, there might be different restrictions. There's also the option to forfeit the patent, and that would be forfeiting the land and relinquishing it back to the BLM, so that patent would be canceled. The property would revert back to full ownership and control of the BLM. And the city would lose control of any land use or development. And it would be placed on the BLM disposal list. And any US citizen or entity is eligible to, to approach the BLM and the Department of the Interior to purchase that. There is a process. It takes about two years for it to complete. So if a third party were to go in, that's about how long it would take. And in regard to the reversion that, there's some paperwork involved, but that's a little more expeditious way to go about it. The final option is for the city to, could purchase the parcel. And there is a formalized process through the Department of the Interior to put in a requisition that the city would like to actually purchase it. It is conducted at purchase prices at fair market value. The amount that was listed in the patent regarding a payment was in the event of a default, essentially, like for them to apply. Essentially, it would be a use. for them to apply, um, essentially would be a use, um, payment or non-use payment for that matter. It takes about a year to process the sale through this, um, this section two oh three process. It removes the patent restrictions, uh, with the exception of the BLM still would keep their, um, mineral rights. And then the city can control the use and development of the land. So as we discussed this before, um, I had brought it to council. So this section here is where that, um, section twenty is. All of this, this entire map here is on, um, anything with it, those black marks is on the BLM disposal list. So the BLM actually, this, the, the portion where the city parcel is, is right here, like where this little tooth is missing. And so it would go back onto that list, um, if the city chose not to do that. And the, the portion here south of, um, of eighty, which is over here, and I guess actually I can try and show you, uh, a better map. Because I wanted to make council aware of all this as well. So this is that parcel right here. All of this in the, um, is part, is that section twenty. This is the city parcel. This portion is up for sale right now and there is interest by a third party who is looking to acquire it. And, um, this goes, so this is, to put into, into clearer context, this is where our hill is. You can actually see right here the art hill. The other thing that's important about this particular parcel is there are several towers and you can see those out, um, there are several communication towers with the city, um, they, with law enforcement, uh, fire, BLM. There's a KRAL, so that's kind of defunct, but it's still up there. There's University of Wyoming and, um, and another one. And so there is also a, this access road right here. This is, for, uh, parcel of land is owned by Aggie. Here's the city's, uh, um, water treatment plant. And so this, I believe this road, um, that there's access to the water treatment plant on both sides, right?
Yeah, that's a, actually, that's our tank farm and there is, yeah, we have, uh, access to that.
So with this parcel that is currently for sale, it does have these towers on there. This is part of the discussion that we're going to have with BLM in a few weeks, just to understand how would, if the BLM does, um, dispose of this property, what are going to be the, um, you know, what's going to happen to these easements or rights aways or however, uh, just whatever type of agreement is there to keep these going because those are critical communication towers.
Isn't one of them privately owned by that radio company out of Saratoga, uh?
Bigfoot?
Bigfoot, the KRAL.
Well, no, but there's another one that does the Motorola for road and bridge and, uh, I cannot, I can see his face, but I can't think of his name. His son took it over because he kind of stepped back. But I believe they have a tower up there too and they serve quite a few, uh, public or governmental agencies. Uh, Ryan Electronics.
Yeah, so this is, um, I've, I've brought this to BLM's attention that this does need to have some, um, some specific consideration because of the impact to, you know, if that's sold and how that could impact those uses of those.
Do the people who own the towers own the land or they're just renting and leasing the land from BLM?
Well, that's part of the, um, there, there needs to be, there's a little bit of research that he needs to do to, to really understand. Is it an easement? Is it a right of way? Is it, you know, what specifically? Because these are, some are government towers, some are privately owned. And I think all but one are in, in use, is what he had said.
And they do have interested people in purchasing it?
Yes. Um, so, um, so the, this third party, they are a, an energy developer. They're looking at this northern part of that parcel to develop it, build a frontage road, build their headquarters and bring in infrastructure there. They are a solar developer. My understanding is what they'd like to do, and don't quote me on this because I could be totally wrong, but what I gleaned was that they're looking to develop a solar farm, um, over by, I, was it Separation Flats or something like that? So south, and I'm not sure how far from the, the windmill farms or if there's any tie-in with that.
Separation Flats.
Just to the north, isn't it?
Isn't that like south of Bear Oil and west?
Like I said, I could be totally wrong. I think I had my landmarks wrong. I, it might have said a different name.
The problem is I have like Tin Can Alley and there's forty of them, but which one, you know, but when you say separation flats, to me, that's like south of Bear Oil and, and west, but I.
And I could be wrong on the name. I just recall that it was, I believe it was south, somewhere south.
Oh.
Not terribly far from the wind projects. But I'm not, I don't have any confirmation on that, whether it's just a concept, whether there's been any further discussions.
I haven't heard about it at all, but.
So those.
But having them develop that, put it in infrastructure and office buildings, uh, that's not a bad thing to me. It would probably make us look better from the highway.
And this does start, you know, begin to address a lot of Jackie's concerns in, in regard to the development, what you're seeing and, and more of the commercial aspect versus, um, more of an industrial type of look. But that still doesn't answer the question about this particular parcel.
Well, I, I think some of the first questions we had probably still remain. One is if we purchased it, what would, what would that look like? I mean, what would that cost? And I don't think that's an easy answer, but I think somebody at the BLM could probably give us a, a pretty good idea.
Well, it does require a formal, um, process through their, um,
A request to buy?
Yeah. And I'm not clear on the exact specifics on, of that. Um, I haven't dug into that yet. Without, you know, if, if council would like me to investigate that further, I am happy to do that.
I think we should. What do you guys think?
Be nice to know what they, they think it costs us.
That would be an option.
Give us more information to make it better to see.
You know, I was part of the car club when we bought, can't remember how many acres it was out south, but we bought those for the racetrack and then sold other parcels off. And that's where all those houses came from and that's what paid for the racetrack. And so I know that you can buy property from the BLM, but I do, I wasn't as involved as some and I do know that it took a while.
Yeah, and it, the, the current process that we would fall under would do this, um, section two of three direct sale because we already are working with them and, and actually in regard to the other parcels that the BLM currently has on the disposal list within city limits, those have been offered to the city as, you know, as the, for lack of a better term, um, generally is a right of first refusal.
I'd like to know what that costs. Roughly. So we can say way too high, can't do it, or let's pursue it.
Would I pursue it with that going where you started?
Right, but I mean, if we have an idea, then it'll help us make better decisions all the way.
Don't really know which direction you think about going, tell you by that.
Might be out of the question totally, or it might be really the way to go.
And part of that, if the city does acquire, the city would then be fully responsible for bringing in all the infrastructure as well. So there's, I mean, there's a, um, there's considerations on, on all sides.
Other development to the west of there probably would have no effect on the infrastructure being put on this parcel at all, correct? I mean, it's far enough away.
Um, are you referring to the, uh, fire station in barracks?
Correct.
Cody, can you respond to that?
I believe so. I'd have to look at our infrastructure, our GIS maps to see where the water systems are at around that parcel where the BLM Fire Department's going to be at. But it might be good if we're going to be tie, helping them tie into it, look at an easy route to tie in the city parcel as well. More of a direct.
Like if they're going right past it, it would be easier for us to hook on. That, that's what I, I wonder about that too.
Yeah. So thank God, if we came up Bennett Street and went straight onto the two properties, we would parallel and then we could just tee off of that for all of our utilities and have utilities to both sections. Right.
Is this how, um, layers in there? Now this doesn't have the utility layers. But the BLM parcel there looking to build here and I'm here. This is would be the fire station. The barracks would be here.
Well, where the barracks are, if the utilities come up like straight down Bennett that way, like Cody was saying, then it would kind of be touching both properties and then it would be easy to hook on right there and go either way. I mean, like most of them would be put in by BLM.
And for future having utilities on that parcel, no matter which way it goes, would be a good selling point for any future developer, knowing that there is utilities on that lot. Or if we decide to do it, it's already there.
Is that where that dirt trail goes up and hits that white road? Maybe I can read it here. Yeah, Bennett Street. Never mind, that answers my question. Yeah, if it comes down Bennett.
Straight to the south.
Would go from drop off there.
It's just about there anyway.
Yeah, just go straight south.
Yeah.
And go left or right.
Yep.
I mean, depending on where we put a shop over there, it'd make it a lot different how long, sort of water like you go around.
Right, because you would only need that to the shop, correct?
Yes.
So there's, if the shop were in that corner, then there wouldn't be much utilities just because Bennett Street's there and it's obviously got sewer and water. I don't know if it's of the size that would handle another shop, but it's just a shop.
Yeah.
It's not a shopping mall or anything.
Well, when we meet with the BLM in a couple of weeks, we can ask about what are their, you know, where, how do they look to tie in utilities to those for that development and that can help us kind of scope this out a little bit better as well in regard to overall cost estimates.
Do you know, there's sewer, level and grade? And the fence was the first year improvements.
Big expensive defense. That should be the big expense.
Correct. But there again, if we move everything to that end, the fence is a fence, but if we didn't fence it all in and moved everything to that end, the utilities could be a whole lot cheaper because we could lean on BLM's extension of that possibly.
Well, if you move to that end, you'd have to go into Jackson Street or that with our utilities.
What's that?
You'd have to go into Jackson Street with our utilities there.
Why?
It'd be, you know, their aggressive come from that all the way up to Bennett Street. That'd be a lot further. Just if we put it all the way down there, just go with the next, go to Cody.
Our, well, our first thought on that is the reason why we wanted to do that size because of the equipment that we'd have to get in and out of our Street Department, Jackson Street. We wouldn't be running that equipment right through a neighborhood constantly, so it's, it's quieter to some extent or another.
Well, and you'd be real close to utilities there too.
Yeah.
Same distance.
Sure, they would be in Jackson Street, wouldn't they?
There, there should be utilities on Donell too, if we could just bring up from Donell.
There may not be on Jackson Street from Donell.
North, south, south.
South.
Yeah.
There probably isn't, is there?
I don't think there is. I think it comes up Jackson to Donell and then splits. From what I can read.
Be my guess too, because there's nothing out there.
If you go over to Washington Street though, doesn't that continue on up Washington Street? There's, there's buildings on the right-hand side up on the upper part of that street.
Yes, I believe so. On Washington, there does, there is.
They go all the way up?
Yeah, because we have to the K O A, that's water sewer, yeah.
And the bar and the laundry mat.
Yep.
Right, okay.
And I suppose some additional consideration would be from where would any development on the south side tie into? This is, although it's not something you have to think about now, where would any development here have to tie into?
Any development there would be crossing under I eighty, be a bore job. And we'd probably come all the way up Jackson Street and underneath with it and then tie it back over. Think that would probably be.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken though, at TA, I think they had to put in a ten-inch water line.
They might be able to come over from the TA, yes.
So for that part, for that, that parcel, it might be, it might already be on that side of Interstate eighty and then they just have to go to the west. I don't know. I don't know.
There is, I, I think there is a line that goes from our tank farm to the pin on that side of the highway. I don't know if that has to, I'd have to look at that.
I, I just remember when they built TA, it was kind of a scandal because they had to run under the highway and over to TA with what I thought and they thought and they're, you know, a, a ten-inch water line, which was way overbuilt. And the same with their sewer. And they had to pay for it, of course, because they were the developer. But it seems to me that there's a nut, be worth checking into, but there's enough water and sewer service to that to then run parallel to eighty, uh, headed west. I don't know for that, but.
This is private property here. This is Aggie unless it can run closer in that right of way.
Oh. That's another point.
But these are all things like in the big scheme of things that need to be.
If you just put a shop in, you don't need extreme water. I mean, it ain't like, like I said, it ain't like apartment complex you're putting in there.
Well, the one thing that we would like, it'd probably be at least a two-inch because we have to fill up our sweepers. So, and our sweepers, our street sweepers. So we, right now, we utilize a two-inch line to fill those up at the shop, the Public Works shop. So.
Just out of curiosity, what do they hold?
I want to say it's like two hundred and fifty gallons.
Out, out of curiosity, how can we load them down there by the underpass on that load chute? We got that water load chute down there, I think.
The well, you mean the well water at the sewer shop?
Yeah.
We could build, we could build something in there to make it easier to fill that.
And stuff, because these load trucks out there, it's got the sheeting a lot there, things to load trucks.
Yeah, we have one at that, we have one at, uh, Public Works Building. And then we do have a line down on Golf Course Road off of a fire hydrant that we use to fill up the trucks as well, depending on where at the in town there.
Yeah, because they're using treated water.
Yeah.
And stuff, so. Over there would be using treated water filling them up over there.
True. Yeah.
Maybe modify that one on south side there by, I don't know what shop you call it. What is that called?
That's the sewer, our sewer shop is what we call it, yeah.
Maybe modify that to where it's more user-friendly.
I think that well's still good, ain't it?
I, that's what I was just going to say. I'd have to do a, a look at that well to see what it could actually produce. That way we don't dry it up, run a street sweepers off of it. Because we do fill that up for our sewer jet when we have, uh, emergencies. That's why fills up that piece of equipment.
And that holds what, a thousand gallons?
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of questions to be answered before a decision can even be thought about.
Well, there's that and I also, um, you know, we're back to where the, and this is just food for thought as, as I was thinking. Well, there's that, and I also, you know, we're back to where the, and this is just food for thought, as, as I was thinking about this now, is the, so the current asphalt plant is right here. It's right here. And this is, somebody else's property. This is county property. Right now, the city has an MOU with the county to place snow on this, and I'm actually gonna bring this up this evening. And this is where the city has been storing a lot of snow as well. And whether the county would alternatively consider selling that parcel to the city.
Actually, when they built the jail, the kitchen and the laundry was way overbuilt, admin and stuff like that. So that when, when and if they needed to make it larger, it, it, you'll notice it, it's like, it's got two pods. And so that you would just add pods. And I don't know if that would interfere with that or not. It doesn't look like it on that map, but I do know that it was meant to be expandable if necessary, not overbuilt. Some of it, so they wouldn't have to redo the kitchen and the laundry and such like that. It was really a well-thought-out thing. And but they never, so far, they haven't had to expand that, but I, I have a feeling someday they will.
Thank you, Bill.
Unfortunately.
And that's one of the reasons I'd like to start utilizing the lots as much as we can in the city because they've been gracious enough to let us use this and have an MOU. We do have some material piles that are stored right behind there on that county property. And that is in the MOU that we can actually store stuff back in that section. We have miscellaneous piles of asphalt mill, some blow sand for hot mix that we, that we used to use. It got contaminated with grasses and stuff, so we put it back here and kind of just let the county pick from it. Or if other departments need sand throughout for baseball fields or something, we just, we have a pile back there. And they're gracious enough to, to say that we could keep storage back there for time being, but I would like to be able to give that back to them.
I haven't really looked at that area lately, but it'd be worth talking to them about if and when they're going to have to enlarge the jail. Is that still a workable plan? Because when they did that, that was in two thousand and four is when the jail got done.
Well, isn't that part of the property they was gonna look at putting that piece and pond in on?
Yeah, yes.
So.
Yes, because it wasn't developed in that plan, it reverted back. Yeah, they basically give it to the developer for so long, and then it got extended a time or two, and then they said, well, we'll take it back, and if you do end up doing it, we're still open to a comeback.
Wasn't there a requirement that we had to have catch water there for some reason? I thought there was.
If we hit ten thousand, if we hit ten, over ten thousand.
When our population hits ten thousand, that's.
We have to, yes.
We have to catch it basically.
We have to have a retention pond, yeah.
Storm sewer retention pond. And ten thousand's the trigger. So we're good. How often do they do?
Ten years.
Census is ten years, so we got eight more years before we would be faced with that. Didn't they just get that done a couple of years ago?
It was during twenty twenty.
Oh.
Twenty thirty.
I'm flies.
We don't have to worry about it.
Yeah. Debbie worked with on the census thing, because she wanted a job that counts. Ha! That was a weird deal. They sent her out in the boonies to abandoned camp trailers. They must have looked at it on Google and said, see who lives there? She'd come back with pictures of a camp trailer with no doors and windows and yeah. But I do believe there will be a time when that will need to be developed. And that is a logical place to do it, because other than that, you're gonna have to bore under the highway and go south with a pretty good-sized pipe. Over, wouldn't be a pipe, it'd be more of a covert-type thing. What else you got?
That's all we have. If there, in terms of following up, what I have for follow-up is with the BLM to understand what it's gonna take to begin that appraisal process. Follow up with BLM, what are their plans for utilities, to bring the local utilities in, see if maybe that might work in with us to bring those into that parcel. Those are the two questions I wrote down. Is there anything else you would like to follow up on?
Well, and how flexible they might be about, you know, the fencing thing, the times, the I don't know what it's gonna cost to fence that entire thing. But I'm sure it's six digits. I'm sure it's not a million, but I bet it's over a hundred thousand by a long ways. I have no idea. I have no clue. We ought to call a fencing company. Somebody would be able to tell you. Just to have an idea what's it gonna take to fence the whole thing.
I could get, I could get a rough estimate.
What it's costing to run it, but.
Yeah.
I really can't think of any other questions. Do you, anybody else have any questions? Jackie? Monia? Bruce?
Is there any timeline that you would like us to have this information back to you?
January fifteenth-ish. Okay, I'm being a chicken.
I don't think it's a real priority.
No, I don't either, but
I mean.
Sooner than later, so we can put it to bed, one way or another.
Okay, so within the next three months?
Yeah, month or two or three. I wouldn't mind having it done before January, just just because. But if it can't be done before then, that's okay, too, but just to put it to bed, you know what I mean? Make a decision, move forward, or start the process of moving forward. And then we might decide to do something, and then the BLM might not agree with it, and so it might end up being years and years and years. I mean, who knows? BLM's kind of unpredictable. Not our local officer, they're, they're amazing people, but when you start mixing in the federal government and their wishes, who knows, you know?
Well, that was kind of my thought on just starting with the, the four-inch parcel, is if we had to vacate it or change it up, that would be very easy for us to vacate that section and get the materials out and turn it back over one way or another.
Yeah, be a lot cheaper, too, to would serve a purpose, an immediate need, without really sticking our neck out. Well, can you guys work on all of that, bring it back, and whenever you're ready, and so we can then make a more educated decision?
Absolutely. And would you like us to do, like, a short work session, or would you prefer just an update during a council meeting?
Probably another one of these.
Okay.
Anybody in the back there have any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
So are you guys gonna, no decision, formal decision is made now, I understand that, but are you still proceeding with a mod, a plan for modification of use for the snow storage?
Yes. Well.
Did you put the fence out for the four acres?
Well, I don't think we're ready to do that until we have some more answers. But it's probably gonna happen.
One of the, because it's still in coming, in regards to, we do have a meeting with the BLM in a couple of weeks. We will ask about that, you know, if, if we can use a portion of that, or what the requirements are. Any questions, please feel free to reach out and request it. So you can just call my office or Cody, and we'll, you know, after we meet with them later, happy to let you know what, what we learned.
It would be nice to be able to put snow there. We would save miles and miles and miles on our city trucks and fuel and time and a better job of keeping the streets clean easier, correct?
Yes, that, yes.
I was just wondering if we had some kind, we would pile snow over there for years. The city has for years, I don't know, would they just done it? Out of, you know, thinking that you do it and no problem, or?
Well, and the original plan doesn't top discuss snow. It says streets materials, and I mean, in a way, it's a material that's on the streets.
Because of streets.
I mean, it's not specifically named, but neither is, you know, tar and gravel and all these other things.
But the purpose of the property or the city was to maintain streets.
To maintain streets.
So, snow removal would kind of fall into that. You gotta put it someplace.
Yeah, yeah. It's gotta fall in tune.
Yes? Oh, you just looked at, you really wanted to say something. Okay. If there's nothing else, do you have anything else, Cody?
No, sir.
Anita?
Nothing further, thank you.
Um? Anyone in the council? Okay, thank you all. And we'll get a break, and then we'll have the city council meeting later. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anita? Anita?
Don't let her get away.
Anita? Cody?
He's just gonna run. He's just gonna run.
I was, I was told the years in past, because that's city property, but.
That's probably true, right up until the point that you read the original nineteen sixty-six, which nobody had read in God knows how many millions a year. Back when they called it a pad.
Talking government.
Yeah, true. And so that's where you go, okay, so what are you referring to here when you say? When you pile stuff on that ground? If you, if you pile dirt or sand, just, just go to our, go to our yard now, where we have sand and dirt piled up. How much of it's on the outside of the chain link fence? So then are you gonna put?
To stay on top of the radio, but next week I'm going to call this place.
It's from work.
No, I'm going to visit the kids. They're here with me.
Oh, good for you.
I don't know if you're totally surprised.
Oh, I'm surprised.
That's cool. Tell me about that. So he was from.
That's a long drive though, holy cow.
Yeah, so.
It's just like.
It gets out of the system. So after I am quite.
It's not.
It's one drive, it's not a worse trial.
Yes.
It's good for you.
Okay.
Over in the marsh? Yeah.
I wish I seen my red running grass. Not much you can shoot in your gun, they might try.
There'll be a few bottles of night tonight, huh?
Well, Logan, I just got light three six to notification. They must be back now. Or at least Gary, I don't know if they took two separate vehicles.
In my life.
Cause that's a lot of people.
Yeah, instead. He takes stuff. Don't figure it out.
I have a headache.
Sorry. Normal thing or just. Unless I have a drink and a water. That might be it. Well, there's water, yeah.
I'm working on it. I already finished the regal. That's the other reason I get headaches is if it all gets me devastated straight with that.
You fester? You fester?
Uh, no, but now I have a system. I have, I have one, or I have one eighth of a section that is finished and I know what the angle is. It's two point five degrees off, blah, blah, blah. I don't know. It's, it's crazy. Cause it's, you know, it's running downhill the street and you still have to be straight up and down.
Yeah, sure, they're straight up.
Right, and each one of them.
You can't pull a fence like this.
Right, right, so each one of them has a quarter inch uh, from the top left corner to the bottom right corner. On the top, a quarter inch.
Double.
Huh?
Double cuts.
Yeah, they're all cut on an angle, but they're straight up and down. When you put them in the unit, they're all straight up and down. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty cool thing to sit and do.
Way too ambitious.
It's a waste of time.
Yeah, way too ambitious for me anymore.
Well, the, the good part is.
You got better things to do for the city. We should, you know.
He should be over there spreading the rock. Man, I can't believe how many there are and how much we have left.
You didn't count any truck, are you? Make sure you got them.
Heavy is, you know, when I come out, she was laying in the car when she cut her arm. And I thought, are you serious? She's not, I figured she was making, you know. And I said, what did I do to her? She goes, oh, it just fell down. And I said, are you okay? And she goes, well, I kinda hurt my arm and then I looked and I'm like, kind of hurt your arm. It looks like you haven't ripped it off. And sort of laying in with the oxide on it. And then I made a fast little sandwich and stuck it on there, cause I don't, you don't want a Band-Aid on there, cause then you, you know.
You can't get it off. Once it dries out.
Put a, a wrap on it. And half our hours, she's going to spread rotting and then I told her. We got to take, finally convinced her to go to the doctor. He, you know what he did, same thing I did, but.
When, when you showed me that picture, I'm like, did she jump in with a rover in behind her?
You know, and look at these.
I know you.
We gotta get them.
Yeah, we're, kids have hard times standing up anymore, huh?
I did. I told her, when my mother was John O'Grady's kids, so I see you bought a, bought the nursing home. And.
I think.
Yeah, you don't bounce up like you used to. You used to be jumped up to see who had seen you fall down. Now you look up to see who can help you up.
Do you just go like this? I put my hand in the air.
In my leg. Climb it up on it and then you exit down.
You're not, you're not doing nothing but they climb it down.
It's actually gonna be a lot of this. Couple of nights later crying and going out on.
Lay one way and it hurts, roll it, get feel better, feel better, we're a little bit gonna start hurting a little bit.
Oh, the first thing, first thing, yes. I thought they were having.
Their dad's been over here trying to hire me.
Really?
Keep your slack.
Which is why we're. I just have to do that.
My dad said, we're paying twenty dollars now. And he was worth it.
Already, it's not cowboy.
There you go.
This is from Wyoming, thank goodness for going to that.
I always.
Region six means.
Oh, right.
It's like the.
I'll take a look at that.
They called me today and asked more. Step down from the little seat, because he doesn't be there anymore, has to absolutely replace me.
I love listening to.
So those of you that are gonna be here, if you're having a year, you're gonna do that, wake up at seven in the morning every other, every week during legislature.
Cause you know when your mom.
But it is.
He likes, he likes being a politician.
Yeah, that's why you want to.
That was pretty cool.
That was.
That's really cool.
That was, the only part that bothered me was when she said, you thought that, you know, that one issue.
For the kids.
I called Matt.
He does a bad move. Region six.
President stands today, I got, I know, I don't know. President, wham, guy. Hall, Matt Hall. All right, it's time. All right, is everybody ready? All right, I will call this meeting to order. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Terry Wycom.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner. Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelaw.
Here.
Councilmember Chris, Chris Weisenberg. Councilmember Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve the October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, city council agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made in second to approve the October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, city council agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would you please open online voting?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with five yeas.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Councilman Wells.
I move to approve the city council consent agenda of October fifteenth, twenty twenty four as presented.
Second.
And a motion made in second to approve the city council, or the city consent agenda of October fifteenth, twenty twenty four as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with five yeas.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is citizens' participation. This is a time set aside by resolution number two C nineteen ninety six. It sets a time limit for public comment of five minutes. For any citizen that would like to speak to us about anything that is not on the agenda. And if you would care to do that, please come forward, state your name, sign in and tell us what you got on your mind. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to us tonight?
Good evening, mayor and council, I'm so sorry I'm not on your agenda. Let me, let me fill this out first. Okay.
Tell us your name, Yvonne.
I'm sorry. Yvonne Johnson with Carbin County Economic Development.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, may I approach?
Yes.
So I'm handing out the quarterly report.
Thank you. Do you have one for the clerk?
I do, yep. This is Weisenberg. Okay, reason why that I'm here tonight is some of you received in your books. An upcoming meeting that is coming up November twentieth. And I just want to skim by, I don't really need any type of comment from you or anything. A just real quick explanation. So Carbin County was selected by the Wyoming Business Council along with five other counties in the state of Wyoming. To do an assessment of our county. So the plan is November twentieth, from ten to twelve thirty. We're going to have a meeting and I invited about thirty eight to forty different representatives. And all aspects of economic development to attend and to have a voice about what is the needs of. Our county seat, our other municipalities in Carbin County, what the woes are, just really have a good discussion. And what direction do we want to go? What is it that we want to see as our communities change? And we would like growth and development, of course, but we do have some things that are hindering us. And how are they, so the insight consulting team is going to help us with that. I've met with the city manager, Tom, a couple of times and gone over my invite list. And we both are very satisfied with the people that, that have been invited. There are five representatives from the city of Rollins. And I hope that all of them will be able to attend. And that's it, I will have a full report and get on the agenda. I have not done that in a while and here in the near future. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address us at this time? Going once, twice, all right, we're moving on. The next thing on our agenda is a board of adjustments appointment. It looks to me like we have one opening and we have one applicant. Oh no, there's two seats available and we only have one applicant, is that correct? Am I reading that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And. I would enter, there's one person apply, I, I would, I'm gonna do it a little different. The person that applied is Eddie Archileta. Can you come up Eddie and tell us why you have applied and what? Special talent you will bring to that board?
Well, I miss this place. You know, I really wasn't involved for four years and it was real exciting to be involved in the city and that. And I wanted to get on this last time, so, well, for now I'm gonna get into adjustments, board of adjustments. And then hopefully run in the next two years for a member of council, so that's why I wanna do it. And I wanna help the city out, get involved again, you know, and with the city and everything else that goes with it.
All right, thank you. Councilman Wells?
I move to appoint Eddie Archileta to the board of adjustments for a term ending January thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Second. Thank you.
There been a motion made in seconded to appoint Eddie Archileta to the board of adjustments for a term ending January thirty first, twenty twenty six. Is there any discussion? Only discussion I would have is thank you Eddie, I think you'd be a perfect fit.
Well, thank you, I'm glad you accepted me. Thank you.
All right, with that being said, open online voting, please.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with five yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is city council reports and ward updates. The first one is myself for ward number one. I don't really have anything, reports for that ward, but I did attend a cog meeting. There were several things discussed, the hospital did a presentation on their. Hospital district. Promotion for, that's gonna be on the next ballot for their hospital district. And there was a vote made to. Send a letter of support for the. Oh my gosh, my head's. And there was a vote made to send a letter of support for the, oh my gosh, my head's or the, what's it called, Tom? The Heritage Found, the Heritage Designation for Carbin County and Nitrona County, I guess. And there was a little bit of a presentation about that. And other than that, I don't remember anything else, unless you know of something, Tom, it was kind of a short meeting.
There was the advocacy group. The first.
Yes, there was.
The children's advocacy?
Was it advocacy or was women and children?
I think it was the children.
I don't remember who they were. I must have not been paying attention.
Are they based out of Nitrona County?
No, they were Rawlins.
They were Rawlins.
Well, they service Rawlins.
They service Rawlins, and they were.
Sorry. I looked for my agenda, but I couldn't find it on my haystack on my desk, and I apologize to everybody for that. But there really wasn't a whole lot discussed at that meeting, and that's all I have. The next one is Board of Adjustments, Ward One Update also from Councilmember Seelof.
Nothing on Ward One, but we did have a meeting, and they, we worked with the gentleman to get him a garage approved in Rawlins, so going forward with that, so, and just wait for our next meeting.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Urban Systems Committee, Councilman Garner, he's not here. Ward Two Update, Councilmember Lumen.
Just a few concerns, 'cause I'm right down the street from the baseball fields. And when I drive by, it seems like one day it's all cleared, and then the next day they're digging up stuff, and yeah. And the kids are out there, do you know when they're done? 'Cause I mean, we're due to have snow on Thursday, so.
Honorable Mayor, Councilwoman Lumen, so what they are currently working on is moving the transformer box, the electrical box. It was right up next to the building, and they would have kids kind of playing on it during games, and that's not very good to have happen, so we had them move that up behind one of the bagels. So there was some earth moved in order to move that, but it should get back in and then settle down for the winter season.
Okay. I am looking forward to an update on when they plan to do the asphalt and the covering and those kind of things as well.
Yep.
Hopefully before they start playing. And also still waiting for a report about the fire as far as start of it and those things. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, next thing is DDA Main Street and Ward Three Update, Vice Mayor Sanger.
I don't have any Ward Three Updates, and the DDA actually has their meeting next Monday, but I do have a small little list here. We have trick-or-treat on downtown streets Thursday, October 31st, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. If you've never been down there, it's hilarious to watch all those little kids and their parents try to keep them in, going in the right direction. Veterans Day Exhibit, I don't know if you've seen this one, it's honoring our veterans in Rawlins, and they're doing a display in the corner of the Ferguson Building. If you go to visitdowntownrawlins.org for all the information you can present, if you have a veteran in your family and you want to present him in a picture form and a little bio, they put that in the window. So it's gonna be interesting, it'll all be red, white, and blue in background and what have you. Holidays, we have Blue Plaid Friday and Black Friday, and Small Business Saturday on November 29th and 30th. Shop Downtown When Big and other events are being planned as we speak. They, the Design Committee is hard at work on that. And new and expanding businesses continue to look at Downtown Rawlins, and stay tuned for more of that. They're trying to expand into larger buildings, so.
That's it? Sounds good, thank you. Councilman Weisenberg is not here, so we'll go to Member at Large, Councilmember Wells.
I just have one thing. The Rawlins Cross Country Team was set to host Regionals on Friday at Rawlins Rochelle, but they moved it to Thursday because of the weather, so please come out and support our athletes. They work hard all season, and there are gonna be athletes from all over the state. It'll be good event.
Hey, thank you. I did get a card, and I just passed it around from Wyoming Association of Municipalities thanking us for all attending the Region Six Meeting at the Depot, it was very well attended. I think all of the council people were there, as well as Tom and Panita, and it was, it was pretty cool. Yes, sir.
Just a question for Councilman Wells, when does that start on Thursday?
The girls race at, let me, the girls go first. And they race at 1:00, and then the boys race at 1:40.
And where's this at?
Rawlins Rochelle.
Okay.
1:40?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, anything else? All right, the next thing we will do is, on the agenda is Reports and Information. So this is a Fire Commission Annual Report Update, and I will turn the floor over to Mark Papenheimer, Terry Patterson, and Anna Blackford.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
For the people at home, tell us your names.
Mark Papenheimer.
Okay.
I'm the chairman of the City Fire Commission Civil Service Board. Mr. Patterson is one of my co-members on the board, and we have Anna Blackford, who is not available this evening, also on the board with us. We've been working diligently along through 24, we've had six meetings. We haven't had a new hire session this year. We completed that last year and haven't had a need for a new list, so we've cruised through 24 in that aspect. We have had a promotion session, and we are working on a bunch of bylaw changes. Don't sow dread into your collars, it's mostly semantics. We had some verbiage that the previous chief wanted inserted in the bylaws, and in the vein of getting along, we, it was, it's not a big deal, it's mostly semantics. There is some pieces in there that we'd like to change and remove. Nothing big, nothing pushing the limits of any, any laws or regulations, but we should have, we're sorry, we don't have those available for you currently, but we hope to have all our updates done before the end of the year. So it shouldn't be an arduous process, we'll get those ready and get them for legal to look through, and then have them for you to review. So not, nothing earth-shaking, just kind of back to our more normal schedule. We normally only have about three meetings a year, so pretty quiet normally. Any questions? I'd like to thank Chief Robinson for all of his help and input on it, and Lynn for all of her help getting things recorded and done properly.
Well, we certainly appreciate your hard work and diligence and all of that, and it's a very important part of our Fire Department. And I've got cards here for you, can you, would you make sure that Ms. Blackford gets hers?
Yes, absolutely.
And these are from the staff and the council.
Okay.
And, thank you. And we certainly appreciate your hard work and look forward to the changes you suggest.
We've promised to not bury you in ink, we'll make it easy.
If I see you come in with a wheelbarrow full of paper, I'm leaving.
I'm not even worried to do that.
All right, thanks again. All right, the next thing on our agenda is City Manager and Staff Reports. I'll turn the floor over to Manager Tom, Sarbi.
Hey, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Council. Just as a reminder, October 22nd, we will have our quarterly meeting with the Town of Sinclair, where we get together and discuss our water issues, and that is scheduled at 5:00 p.m. at the Depot here in Rawlins. Also along the water-related lines, the city has received the final master water plan from WWC. And I have that in my office, I have emailed to council the executive summary of that. I do have the full version in my office, and I am happy to go over that at any point that you would like to. The Parks Office that was approved to be demolished at the last meeting, that has been taken down and removed. So if you go past the park shop, you'll see that that building has been removed. And it is also that time of year that we need to look at the Wyoming Community Gas. They make a donation to the city for certain projects. This year, we have received notification that we are receiving $11,518 from Community Gas. And it is at the pleasure of council how that will be spent. Staff can get together and bring up some ideas, if that is acceptable to council or if council wants to discuss that amongst themselves and let us know either way. But we are happy to discuss that amongst the staff to come up with potential projects, but that ultimately is a council decision as to how that will be spent.
Tom, do, on that note, where do we stand with the scoreboards at the baseball fields? 'Cause that would be a real good display for that company.
Yeah, the last year's, I believe, went to the scoreboard, and I don't believe we have that one up yet.
Was that the scoreboard, though, at the, not the Little League?
No, it was like the softball, baseball fields up by the rec center.
Are you referring to the other one?
Neither are up, though.
Yeah, I don't believe that they're up yet, we're waiting for the electrician.
I did briefly talk to somebody that worked at Holly Frontier, and their electrical shop has volunteered to install it. So I don't, I don't, they were told that something to do with liability, but if we have free electrical work, I would love to go that route.
Okay, we can definitely follow up.
And it would be Louis Espinoza.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's awesome.
And he volunteers for all our rec programs, so they have his contact info.
Well, when the staff talks about it, talk about the tournament that's coming, and I would really like to have those fields look as good as possible, and scoreboards are what people sit and stare at all the time, so, to me. And it would be a highly visible thing for that company, too, so.
Yeah, so that's the other fields, that's the VFW.
Right.
The other scoreboard was the ones outside the rec center.
I don't think either are up yet.
I know, but he's referring to putting that money in a different place.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
As opposed to putting it in the other one.
Right, where the tournament's gonna be taking place.
But there are, there is a scoreboard that's already bought for the VFW field, it's been sitting there for two years.
Ooh.
That's what I was told by the.
Well, we need to get with the.
No, one year.
One year?
No, Mayor and Vice Mayor, the money that we used, that you authorized last year was to purchase, we received the money in May, and that.
But that was for the other field, I'm talking about the VFW field.
That we have not used any money for the VFW.
I don't think it was purchased by us.
Oh, okay.
'Cause I know the money that we received for, that you authorized last year went to the field across the rec.
I know it wasn't the VFW.
Right.
And that scoreboard has been purchased, it's just sitting waiting for the electrical, like the city manager stated.
Yeah.
The one for the VFW, I'm not sure, I just know that.
That was purchased by another agent, or another donation of some kind. And it's been sitting for two years, is what my understanding is.
We need to get those up, Tom.
Yes, I know at the VFW fields, we have one working scoreboard. The other scoreboard does not have electricity to it right now.
That was the problem.
And I'll bet that's the issue that we ran into before you could put another one up, we're gonna have to get electricity, so. I will report back on that.
Yeah, but I know Holly approached them about potentially, 'cause they do have master electricians. My brother is one of them that worked for Holly.
Okay.
So I would like to revisit that if we have people that are willing to donate their time and resources.
That is incredible.
Very good. Yep, we will get on that. The last item that I have is, we will be in the downtown area on Halloween for trick-or-treat. We will close the following streets. So starting at 2:30 p.m. through 5:30, Cedar Street from Third to Sixth Street will be closed, so the kids can trick-or-treat downtown. Fifth Street from Pine Street to the alley north of the post office, and along Fourth Street from the alley bordering the Bank of the West Building down to the Historic Depot will be closed from, again, from roughly 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock on Halloween for the kids, so come downtown and enjoy Halloween if you ever want, so that's all I have to report.
Vice Mayor Sanger, did you have a question?
It was a question as to the scoreboard that's currently at the VFW field, it's not the one that's not up.
Yeah.
Is the other one old, new? How old is that scoreboard that's there currently being used?
I do not know that information.
I don't have a clue.
Okay. Because if it's old, it still gives us an opportunity to.
Oh, yeah.
Put them both up as new.
Especially if we have.
Tournament coming.
Yeah, it's coming.
Tom, will you look into that?
Yes, I'll look into it. I, if I recall correctly, the one that's operational isn't that old, it's still pretty good shape.
If it's not old.
But we will look in, make sure.
Yeah, okay.
And then we will come back with our recommendation to council on that, so.
Well, and I'm not saying this 11,500 needs to go to that, but I just know that with that tournament coming, if we can, the better we look, the better it will work for us.
Another option is that concession stand.
Yes.
Yeah, and Bruce and I talked about a plan for that because we really did feel that the super necessary thing in the center of that field is a concession stand, restrooms, and then an equipment room, and then possibly a storage area for the, when I say equipment room, I mean electrical room.
Yeah.
And then another portion of that would be storage of things like for the bats and the bases and stuff like that, that's in the same area. Bruce came over, and we worked on kind of a scheme that wasn't perfect by any means, but, you know, identified a few things, like make sure there's floor drains in all of them, so they're easy to maintain. Metal outside, metal inside, kind of a thing. There's still a lot of research would need to be done, you know, go talk to Mikel with the Health Department to make sure that all of these things come up to snuff with the snack bar, as well as get with the Little League and say, what do you want, and how does it accommodate you? There's a lot more that needs to be done, but I talked to Steve, I talked to Chris. talked to Chris, Bruce, in different conversations, and we absolutely felt that the most important things in the center of that ball field is the bathrooms and the concession stand, as well as, you know, the necessities like the equipment rooms. And honestly, it's going to be a building, something sixteen by thirty-ish, and that would be cheaper than awning. It would be more functional, and it would meet the needs. That was just our thoughts, and I give that to Tom to do whatever. But that was kind of the way we were all thinking, and I don't know what you all think, but I will see what they come up with. Okay, anything else? All right, the next thing on our agenda is the city attorney report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. A couple of short updates. The Urban Systems Committee will be meeting next week, I'm sorry, on the 28th, and so that's filling in on Councilman Garner's update in regard to that group. Part of that, what, on the agenda for the urban systems are the bylaws and updating the bylaws. The city has been working with the YDOT to standardize, for the city to standardize the bylaws that YDOT has been working with every other community that has an urban systems advisory board. So that is part of the, that's going to be the main brunt of the meeting. As it, so it's kind of a step process, and I'm not quite exactly sure how it's going to play out, but the ultimate objective is to get this back into YDOT's oversight, because it, Urban Systems is currently governed by a municipal ordinance. And so to get it back into the way it's supposed to be with, YDOT would also require repealing those ordinances that set forth the bylaws. So it's kind of going to be a tiered process, and we've also reached out communications to see what other concerns and the other stakeholders have, which is Department of Transportation, the county, and everything like that, and to kind of, and like I said, to keep it the way it is for everybody else. The city-county MOU is up for review. This was discussed briefly during the workshop in regard to where the city stores the snow, and that's located right behind the detention center. And so part of the discussion had been, and this is just also to give you some background, because sometimes we forget exactly the whole context. So back in 2022, there had been an MOU that was signed, and the city was allowed to put snow there for the county, and there had been some kind of a planned discussion in regard to making fishing ponds and having all of that. When the development for those ponds didn't pan out, the county came back in, and it reverted back to the county. The MOU was revised to, for just storage and some materials, storage, so snow storage and materials. So that's where we are now. I have spoken with Cody. He saw the need for any changes to the MOU as it is currently. No changes are recommended, but wanted to pass this on to council to see if council had any thoughts or feedback.
I think it's, I think it's really nice of them to let us do that. You know, it works for both of us, really.
And I will respond to the county and that the city is not looking to do any changes and to keep a status quo for now.
Tom.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that is, that's it?
All right. Well, thank you. We appreciate that. All right, next thing on our agenda is direction from city council to the city manager. Does anybody have anything that we haven't already discussed? Looks like nothing. All right, we will go on to new business, which is an ordinance about the flood damage prevention. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve on first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance governing the body of the city of Rollins, Carbon County, Wyoming, creating a flood damage prevention ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
One second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance governing the body of the city of Rollins, Carbon County, Wyoming, creating a flood damage prevention ordinance. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I just want to publicly state that...
Sorry, I don't understand.
That I understand that this is going to affect a lot of people, and I'm sad that our hands are tied in this. But we really don't have much of a choice.
I, I absolutely agree with you. I've even thought long and hard about some towns have said, no, we're not doing this. The problem is, if we don't, there are so many avenues of federal funding that we don't even know about, that it would affect. It's scary to do it. It's scary not to do it, and it's one of those things that I wish we didn't have to, but I feel that we do. I agree with you. Any further discussion?
Because the city, we need that extra protection of those things that may happen, and we may need that federal money, and not doing this would deny us or give them a reason to deny us. Hopefully, we can work with them to get that zone decreased or eliminated based on the information, the newer information that they get.
Well, and I would add to that. I want people to know that this is not the one-and-done, that the city is still moving forward with an engineer to try to mitigate this, and like you say, make that either smaller or go away. Just so everybody knows, we are working at that. But traveling at the speed of government and the federal government, it's not a quick thing, but it is what we're attempting to do, so. Is there any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five yes.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is an executive session. Councilman Wells?
I move to enter into executive session at 8:08 PM per Wyoming statute 64-405 to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law on matters concerning litigation to which the governing body is a party or proposed litigation to which the governing body may be a party.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at 8:08 PM. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five yes.
Thank you.
Tonight, I am, I do great as long as I keep my...
Remember that song, have you heard it? Don't let the old man in?
No.
Oh, the old man's been in.
He's still here.
Sorry, Tom.
Fun, fun.
Down the way, huh?
Down the way.
I'm not waiting like I did last year.
Just wait for one more vote.
Three more weeks, and we'll get this all from one way or the other.
Bring some conclusions. Yeah.
We need some young brave to run the guns for you.
Whatever.
Last year, we were never there, so.
I don't know, you know how you drive over the snow.
He's so sick.
Yeah.
Well, they're up high. I mean, they're there. It's just that they're not, yeah, look. So get in.
Good luck. Did you ever get in contact with Tyler's wife, my cross idea? Not that you haven't had a lot.
Yeah.
I don't want to do when you, you don't talk in all days, something like that, so. I'm all on board, and we'll have to go hunt for sponsors for it. Some people are, you know, people want to think about that. Night, chief. Better hurry up, or you're going to be out of hours Thursday by nine o'clock.
I just didn't get it off. Of course, we pulled the downways and all of those first, all that and stuff, you know, passions.
So what can you do with that?
All this stuff, and then finally a crew come.
That's an old thought.
I think we've heard that somewhere before. Yeah, somebody sort of, a bucket driver, he's up there, and we're like, see him.
You're in there?
Yeah.
As far as phone companies or workers, anybody?
We finally threw around a lot of weight.
We have to be here. We'll have your fiber optic cut in ten minutes. Is that impressive? I have seen people take lines against this as well. I have seen patients, people take these lines, and run over holes or ladder, and ratchet straps were able to hold it. It's elevated. So. Still, it's rather come from the alley in the north. The alley on the south. All correct. That was when they pulled. They got work. Wait, it's a tall cycle. Is that working? Jump around the pole. I don't know if I can do that. I think I, I think I'll find you some fence staples. I'm looking at this one. Spray on. Or those wedged. Self type. Yeah. Here, I'm gonna teach you. I don't know. I'm gonna go away. Yeah. That's all that we did. That's really all that we did. I believe that's worth. I could get you a desk. Sure. Two weeks ago. And then you're probably. Kind of a fall dream. Get up there, maybe you are. It's an opportunity. It's, yeah. So totally easy. You can come over there and go. If you go all the way, all the way off the highway. You can get back to the light. Back if you just go over there. But I always hope all these. You go. To head door. For birds to walk through. There is a road over there. There is a road. In there. It comes out. We can go through. Use it. So. We, I always had to go. Put, put it over there. Okay, well, I stood last night. And I thought. I should have heard it. You know, so I, I did. My back truck. No, I. Six, six hour. You know, that's just. You know. Yeah. Was that the off, is that the off fire? Where's the off fire? Is that the left? Sure. The robot. Follow the better. Okay, Mike. This is. Who is that? We have a word. Our air quality is. Yes, well. It was the old part. It was the other. Sure, this is. That's the one. That's the one. Cause I want to tell you. It's good stuff. You could get it. Oh. Where is this? This is the, uh. Oh, that's up in. Up in the. Yeah. Is that Table Mountain? Table Mountain. From there, but you go up. Is this, do you get up into these woods or these ones? That are not part of the ideal, where you can go up and. Pundale, which is where the ride along. Pundale's cool because. Look, the river. The way you got down. Yeah. What goes on? And all those. I remember. Right there. Hopefully. Everything. You got. You got a rock there? No, that, uh. Sorry. Sorry. I don't have another. Since I'm ahead of the times. So. Summer fine. Coming from the top. This is the river. Yeah. Right there. I got the. Yeah, true. Four there. That's just pretty. Over there. I think you can tell. It's on the. Uh, we hear it everywhere. South. I saw them. I think I create here. You. Miles. Big. Four. I feel something. I feel something. I feel a. The water. I know. It's super. There. Just, just. I think. It just might. We'll go from here. Yeah. I did this. You're stuck. If you're looking around, it's. Why would I go there? No, they're not. Oh. The sign coming out. Show the highway. I hope you get to the one here. Yeah. I gotta go like castle. Yeah, it is. Push down. There's because it's signed. I'm so like. Oh shit. It's. I got. I love the. Yeah. All the straight north. You can go straight north, or you can go walk the highway. Outside. Yeah. And, and that's. That sure. Go there. Actually. If you're kind of. Okay. If you get up there, you know. You're like, well, this is. No, but, but you can have. And, and they're all here. Evidence. They do. But there's not much. You're out. Some kind of. And I wanna drive around. It will be. All right. Can I show you all of them? Yeah. I don't know. It is. It cuts the. Do you think? Yeah, it's for. First of all. Yeah, we took one of them. Go along to the. Those outside. Outside. I also want to. We know. Otherwise, I might. I'm gonna be back. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You just came up?
Twenty eight.
I'm sorry, twenty eight?
Yes.
They were heading west. We went west, but it was stopped. So they'll be getting out on sixteen. But they can ride up.
Thank you.
So you took her up there. You see her car? Yeah. Yeah. He drove the three. It's side. Yeah, I was talking like this. I think that. It goes out. Yeah. Okay. I will find. I don't know. I'll leave this side. It was. I don't know. Sorry. Something. It's the best. Everything is. Or. It's just trying to. Uh. A part. Where I always stand. You back up. And you. But it's. We like. You know. We are off. We like. We. Okay. We. We have. Uh. Jesus. I think we were this. Which. Yeah. Yeah, it's been awesome. I just got this book. See. There's the ocean. Then, then we go. Is that on the else? It's, uh. Right. Somewhere up there. It's an explosion. Somewhere up there. It's. Yes, it's a part of the water. Yeah. Ocean. There comes a. Split. And. Yeah. You gotta hike in there. Um, I do. I was on. I said. But, uh, why I go up here. We. We, we went out. Yourself. We went out. Probably the first pass. Run a little. And then we did the head waters. Uh, like the old spinway. Yeah. We went down to the way. This wasn't a picture. No, it was. It was. It was gonna be coming out of the chassis. And I'm. We go up. Pass. And then it's. For the period. Part of the most. You're.
Good. Good. I think she looks like a little cowboy. Good. It's like a white, only person. He's moving. I almost think it's cancer. Yeah. Yeah. Don't people think it's a. Yeah. Yeah. It's cancerous.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a kind of cancer. Okay. They still talking. We should. Yeah.
I think. Sure.
So. Back to. Doodles. Mm-hmm. So you. Do you like bear notes? Right. Yeah, cause we're doing a concession down. There was some. Two bathrooms. Mm-hmm. Storage. Right. How we can do it? I don't know. I don't know. It's like. Okay, man. This is to. They're. They're from. Gloria. They're like. So. We've got a lot. Nice. It's. It's the same. Mm-hmm. Yeah. I could do it. I'm gonna.
Probably. I'm gonna change. Maybe. CJ Box is. Not.
Okay. So. More than. Pretty.
Oh, yeah. Sky.
Okay. So here, here. What can we?
It's a horse trip.
It's not.
Oh, see, yeah. Cause that's where I was at. That's what we're. I think we actually. You know. I do this.
So you can look at this. Yeah. Wasn't. You know. It's, it's a mayor. Does he even meet you? It's just. So.
I see pictures.
The mayor.
One of the ones.
Yeah.
The guy was.
Um. So. Just. Maybe. Something. Something. Here. We have a. Okay.
You don't know something.
There you are. That's. Yeah. It's hot earlier. This is the first time I've ever been hot in here. It's kind of. Just getting it out there.
I don't know. Don't turn off the computer, it's doing something, it says. Here's me. All right, so let me find a written one.
Yes, I found it. Councilman Wells?
I move to come out of executive session at eight forty P M.
Second.
There've been a motion made and seconded to come out of executive session at eight forty P M. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
I'm gonna have to say yea, cause this seems.
Online voting is closed and was passed with five yeas.
All right, thank you. Was there anything discussed in executive session that was, uh, not proper? Hearing nothing? Or did you?
No, I was gonna.
Okay.
Motion is approved in minutes.
Next item, which is approve some minutes, uh, Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of October first, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
There've been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of October first, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, please open online voting, yea.
Online voting is open.
Yea.
Online voting is closed and motion passed with five yeas.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else that needs to come before this body before we adjourn? Seeing nothing, this meeting is adjourned, thank you all, and don't forget, the next meeting is, uh, October twenty second, it's a special joint meeting with the town of Sinclair at the Rollins Depot at five o'clock, and then November fifth, a coun- uh, council meeting on election night.
Good night, guys.
Good night, thanks.
Good.
Thanks, Jackie.